This time we'll open up tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for December the 7th, 2021. The city council should have the minutes from the committee of the whole from our November the 16th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes will carry forward. The cemetery advisory board, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have two vacancies. Term begins January 1, 2022 and ends December 31, 2025. We had two incumbents that both served one full term. Only one incumbent reapplied, that was Gwen Reed. I would like to nominate Gwen Reed for a second full term.
Second.
Have a motion and second for Gwen Reed. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and will be confirmed later on in the agenda.
And I would like to thank Patrick Kinley for his service. And he did not apply for a second term. I would like to nominate Shannon Walden for a first term.
Second. All right. Have a motion and second for Shannon Walden. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Whitten. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? There's something I'd like to bring up. As we approach our next meeting on December the 21st, we would normally have a work session on December the 16th. I would like for the council to consider spending a little extra time at that work session. There are two items that I believe are worth us spending some time learning more about. Number one, there's a proposed development in northwest Auburn called Old Sanford. It's a significant residential development, larger than any that this council has seen in its three years of serving the citizens of Auburn. There are some, definitely some unique things, circumstances about that development. And it's my belief it'd be worth the council's time being able to listen to the staff, make a presentation about this project, be able to ask questions in a more comfortable setting, and just prepare for what decisions we might be making on the meeting of December the 21st. So I'd like for the council to consider coming in a little early to talk about that. There's also another item that is coming to fruition here. Many of you might have, might be aware that the Auburn Airport is going to have to expand its runway due to an FAA mandate and create a safety zone. To do this, they are going to need to cross the road at Sagahatchee Road and go into the Indian Pines Golf Course. This is something I've been working on really since I was sworn in. We have been to Washington, DC a couple of times to see our senator and to see our congressman. We've been to Montgomery to talk to our representatives down there. And it's time now, I think, to present this project to you guys and to let y'all fully understand the dynamics of what this project would be about and possibly what the investment that the city would need to make to make the golf course whole. So there's a lot of information there that I know all about. Beth knows a little bit about it because she also serves on the airport board. But it's, I believe that all of y'all need to be aware of what we're dealing with at this point in time. And I think that'd be a good time for us to sit down and talk about that. I have asked a representative from the airport and a representative from the Indian Pines Board to come and address the city council at that time. So what I'd like for the council to consider is on the 16th to come in at 3:30 as opposed to 4 o'clock and spend possibly an hour to an hour and a half, maybe two hours with the staff talking about all these things. And we will also get prepared for our meeting on the 21st and have our regular work session at that time. Would the council be okay with that? And city manager, do you have any comments to make on that?
No, we're, we're prepared for that date if you guys are available. We would do in the Bustin Training Center.
Okay.
Okay, so are we, would it still be on phone, on the phone?
Not in, not in that case, because yeah, it would need to be in person. You have an in-person meeting for your packet meeting normally. The council members have been joining by phone, but we don't have the ability to do this on Zoom because we're not allowed to. So therefore, if you want to see the visuals and be able to see people are talking about, you need to be there in person. And I want to make clear, you're not deliberating at this meeting for the public's general knowledge. It's for you to gather information. You have been very intentional about that and you don't deliberate at these meetings, but it's time for question and answer. The other misnomer out there, why the airport is being asked specifically to come and provide information to you, they are not requesting anything of you at this time. It's a different scenario than the applicant for Old Sanford is welcome to be present in the room to listen to everything being said as the general public is, but they will not be allowed to speak. You can't ask them questions and they may not present at this meeting.
Thank you for clearing that up.
The public would still be invited.
Absolutely.
The whole thing, it'll start at, it's 3:30, you decide until it's done and everybody's welcome.
And at the Bustin Meeting Room, there's, should be ample space there for the public to attend.
There should be.
Okay. Is the council okay with this? Okay, so 3:30 on the 16th. And we'll take up our work session for our normal meeting on the 21st. And then we'll also talk about Old Sanford as well as the airport in Indian Pines. One other thing I'd like to ask the city council and I'd like to, as a question to the city manager, about four or five years ago, the public was involved with our Parks and Rec advisory team and developing some criteria and some plans for Auburn's future when it came to build out of new parks and rec facilities. As we approach 2022, it's my belief that we need to reevaluate those priorities and go back and look at those and see if they're still the best path forward for our community. It's my belief in listening to many people in our community that we are slowly but surely getting squeezed in space for some of the athletic activities that our children participate in and in some respects, our adults participate in. And I believe we're going to have to reevaluate whether our priorities need to be changed as we move forward as a council. Next year is our biannual budget year where the staff and ourselves will spend a lot of time planning the expenses and the budget for the council as we approach the next two years. And this does give us a little time now to think forward on that topic. I would, my simple request is, Ms. Crouch, if the council is willing, to have the Parks and Rec Advisory Board just reevaluate the priorities that are set now and give us their thoughts and their opinions as to whether those are still pertinent as we move forward to the year 2022.
Yeah, I've been having discussions for some time with our Parks and Recreation Director as to the timing of when the original, we're coming toward the end of the first five years of improvements. And things are changing and dynamics with athletics, other recreation, passive, active items have been changing. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's been taking a light look at data to date. But yeah, normal protocol would be if the majority of the council is so inclined is, is to ask the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to look at the priorities in the Parks and Recreation Cultural Master Plan. And then the, the library board could also tell you because they play a role in that as well, just, you know, where they sit with their general library priorities and what they'd like to see happen and when. And then we'll, we'll gather that information and get it back to the council. We could set a date, but the date needs to be well before we're setting our budget priorities. So in the February, March timeframe would be when we would need that information back. Because staff, to formulate the budget, if we're going to change priorities, we, we don't have price quotes on, on things that are further, years further out on the plan. So it takes us a little bit of time to get some consultant answers so that the budget gets set in accurate numbers. So our finance director doesn't pull her hair out with all of us changing numbers all the time. And we're adjusting as you see and you have on this agenda. Numbers are changing rapidly. And if the economy ever balances itself out, it'll be a little easier on this. But, you know, there's going to only be only X amount of projects we can do capital project wise. And you'll set those priorities as part of the budgeting process. So gathering information is appropriate if the majority of you would like to do that.
Megan, it's, with it being here, the end of the first full week in December, do you think that's an expectation we could receive that report from the Parks and Rec Advisory Group in February, March? What would be a fair expectation?
Yeah, March for sure. And Tyler, that'd be all right with libraries as well. I mean, we're looking at things and it doesn't change what we've been planning. You know, what we're moving forward with is we're master planning the Boykin campus now and, and setting forward. I mean, you'll see a number of design contracts likely on the 21st agenda for a whole host of things we're doing at Boykin and so on. But all that plays a role because again, Boykin could balloon into a $40 million project, another large parks facility with multipurpose fields, baseball, diamonds, softball, parking, restrooms, et cetera, could also be a $40 million project. And those are not going to be sustainable in a two-year period to do $80 million worth of parks projects. So getting the priorities for what needs we need to meet, and I know the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has been looking at things like gymnasium space as a very high priority because of the amount of use we have, not just in recreational leagues, but daily play. So they'll be able to give, Becky has very good data through the Parks and Recreation Department on use, sign up for leagues and so on. And they will give you a good direction based on what they see and what they recommend priorities be considered.
Does anyone else on the council have a thought on this? I don't want to, I've just offered this idea and I'd like for your approval before we move forward. Does anybody else have a thought on this as we?
I would welcome an update, you know, and sort of a refresher. We, you know, appreciate and a pretty comprehensive study, I guess, five years ago now. And a lot of, a lot of waters passed under the bridge since then. So yeah, an update and sort of a, an assessment of where we are now, you know, and what we, where we are on some of these timelines would be very much welcomed. I, I hear a lot about where we are on some of these, these, these plans after our big, big rollout five years ago. You know, what's been done? Why, why hasn't this other thing been done? So yeah, an update would be, I would welcome an update.
Will they also take into account now that we have the census data, include that in there? Since we didn't have that five years ago to look at, could they include that in there?
Absolutely. They can look at. And, you know, Councilperson Griswold's been working with a constituent who's, has big concerns about parks, as you would as well in your ward, on the north side of town, which Becky has some ideas about. And those are things they need to talk about. And that's the whole gamut of priorities. So we've got a huge master plan, but it's also then lending, lending to where we're going to head with that. And we're not way off on that. Lake Wilmore got delayed. Soccer complex bids will be pushed into January, but we are, we are out to bid and we just extended that bidding period a little bit. We'll be talking about moving Lake Wilmore back into the capital stack this fiscal year. We'll be ready to talk with you about that after the holidays because of, because of some of the needs and data that we have and the swimming pool obligations and other things. So there's much, much to discuss coming up, but I think we can actually afford to move Lake Wilmore up. And we'd like to give you a committee of the whole presentation on that to get, get your lens. But in the meeting with the finance director, we can afford to move that up. And so we were supposed to do it and we cut it due to COVID. And then it left the budget completely in this biennium. So those are some things. But I, that is one of the reasons why Parks and Recreation has already gotten a little bit of data. I want to be able to give that base data to you and let you know that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, you know, would be supportive of that. Just so you know that you asked them to look at those things and they would be ready to go. But we'll be more ready. We've been waiting on some things at the pool and some repricing to give you a better idea of where we think that will land.
Anyone else? So is the council okay with making this request of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
Yes.
Yes, and the library board.
And the library board, excuse me. Yes, thank you. All right. And then I have one final question for the city manager. Can you give us an update on Opelika Road, the construction out there on Opelika Road?
I would love to because I will have city engineer Fraser give you a scintillating update about Opelika Road.
I've never given a scintillating report before.
No pressure.
So Opelika Road, it has gone on a little bit long. The contractor is working. He has moved most of his forces to Cox and Wire. They're working hard on the roundabout and they hope to have it functional by Christmas. So most of the forces are there. They are working on the water line. The electrician is underway. We do have some work left to do on the north side of the road, but we're expecting work to be complete, substantially complete with the project hopefully by the end of February, barring rain, holidays, and decent weather.
Okay. Well, that, that was scintillating.
See, it was scintillating and there you go. I think one of the things we talked about, and the city engineer Fraser and I were talking about, we'll work as best we can with our contractor to get lanes open. We've had some frustration around the Thanksgiving holiday and we'll have it coming up again. If they're off the job and there's a way to safely have all four lanes open so the traveling public can traverse the area without having to merge constantly with no workers in the vicinity, we'll, we'll make every effort to do that, but we have to do it in a safe manner. So if we can do that, we'll do that.
On that subject, are we going to have any more closures? Is C, is the train, are they done with the intersections?
The East University Drive crossing, as frustrated as people were, one of the things that they did, and, and the fire department helped a good bit, is when they laid the new asphalt back down and put a lot of water on it to get it to cure as quickly as possible. And they, in their excitement to get East University Drive open, the first day they closed it with very little notice. They, it got a little damaged and so they had to close it to repair it. And I'm not aware, Mr. Woody, there are no others that, there are no others that they needed to do that. But that was coming back and correcting that. And I don't recall how many, how often they do these. Every five years? Ish? Depends.
Thank you.
So is, is that, all that logging on, on Martin Luther King, is that part of that?
The railroad ties, there's, there's big stacks, that's part of it. And I don't know if they're replacing them right there, if they'll pick those up and move it elsewhere on the right of way.
They should come back and pick those up.
Yeah, so pick them up and move them on down the line.
Okay. Any other questions for the city manager? If not, is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
Committee of the whole is adjourned. And we'll go right ahead since it's 7:11 and move into our Auburn City Council meeting for December the 7th, 2021. Lindsay, with the roll call.
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Ms. Wald?
Here.
Oates?
Here.
Arson?
Here.
Smith?
President.
Anyone?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. It's the first meeting of the month, so at this time, we'll start off by recognizing our employee of the month as well as other service awards.
Today, we'd like to introduce you to our December Employee of the Month and many other employees who do an outstanding job for the city of Auburn. I'm Mayor Ron Anders and I'm proud today to introduce you to our December Employee of the Month. I have a memorandum written by Kristen Reader, the Human Resources Director to Megan Crouch, our city manager. Clarinda Jones joined the city of Auburn in June 2020 as the Training and Organizational Development Manager and has excelled in her role. Clarinda consistently demonstrates a high-level professional excellence and passion for developing our employees. She understands it without innovative. High-performing employees, our organization would not be successful. And she embraces her role in providing the training and development for this purpose. One example of Clarinda's going above and beyond expectations is the implementation of offering Microsoft Office certifications. Working with a third-party vendor and RIT department, she brought the certifications in-house, granting our employees access to becoming certified in Outlook, PowerPoint, Excel, and Word. The training allows employees to work more effectively and create better work products. Clarinda is doing an exemplary job for the city and is committed to helping the organization succeed in its service to the public. It is for these and other reasons that I am honored to nominate Clarinda Jones as the employee of the month for December 2021. Congratulations.
to all of our employees with their service awards and all the best to Linda Givens and Michael Marshall as they retire and move on. And thank you for how you have served your city over the years. Just a couple of comments as we move forward. I want to thank everybody involved from the city's perspective. We had a lot of activity going on in Auburn this past weekend with a jingle jog and a holiday market and a Christmas parade. And it appeared that everything went off as smooth as possible. And I know there was a lot of coordination and partnerships involved and all that. And I just thank everybody from the city and all those in the community that volunteered to help make those events go really, really well. Recently, we had an SGA, had another SGA breakfast and we were proud to have Chief Anderson and Assistant Chief Stewart there with us that morning. It was a very healthy morning and great Q and A between the students and our leaders of our police division. And I just appreciate them giving their time. The tree lighting ceremony occurred after our last meeting. I thank the university program council on campus for making that event a special event. There was a lot of people from the community out there as well as college students. It was a nice cross-section of Auburn at the tree lighting and the menorah lighting a couple of Sunday nights ago. A lot of great music from our children and our students. And it was just a, a great event for our community. I want to thank the Water Resource Department for having a Thanksgiving meal and inviting us all to it right before Thanksgiving. The food was great and the fellowship was even better. Tomorrow, I get to participate in one of my favorite events since I've become the mayor and that's the firefighter graduation. A group of young people who have been through a lot of hard work recently will graduate tomorrow and become certified firefighters. And I'm just proud to be a small part of their celebration with their families. And I congratulate all of them for making it this far. This Friday night, I'll be joining the Chamber of Commerce's Young Professionals as they celebrate the year-end of all of their great work. I just thank this group of young professionals for wanting to have a strong desire to learn more about their community and to learn how to serve and to, and to maybe chart their own path for their future as they live in Auburn, work in Auburn, and raise their families in Auburn. And I'm proud to be a part of that. There was a press release that was sent out yesterday about a cool new company in Auburn called Tenabot. It was, started on campus with some great entrepreneurs. And we at the city have assisted them through our incubator program. And they have just received a substantial amount of funding. And that's a, boy, if you want to see a great example of how a, a community and a city and a university and entrepreneurs can all come together and work to make something really exciting, this is a great example. And I encourage all of you to go look that press release up. It's on the city's website. It, I think it did appear in some of our local news. And then finally, you know, we, we thought we were through talking about this, but I want to remind everybody that again, the, the safest way to protect yourself from the virus is to get a vaccine. And I would just encourage all of you, if you haven't thought about that, to give it some thought, to talk to your own doctor, talk to your own family. And if that is something that's good for you, that you feel like can keep you and your family safe as we go into the holiday season and spend a lot of time around people that we love and care about, I would encourage you to look into receiving a vaccine. During the committee of the whole tonight, we appointed two new, two members to the Cemetery Advisory Board. We appointed Ms. Gwen Reed for a second term. And then we appointed Shannon Walden for a first term. We appreciate everybody that's willing to serve our city and, and apply for these boards and commissions and thank the others that did that. And thank everybody that has served the cemetery board here, Mr. Kinley, and thank him for his time. We also had a discussion about having a work session in our December the 16th city council work meeting that would include some information about the Old Sanford project and some information about the potential for an airport safety zone and how it would impact Indian Pines. We've also made a request of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and the library board to give us an update for their capital master plan and their priorities as we move into 2022. And then we also got an update on how the Opelika Road project is going. Okay. Any other announcements from the city council?
Okay, I have an announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank everyone who gave contributions to the senior citizen disabled and homeless Thanksgiving dinner at Boykin the Sunday before, before Thanksgiving. And I, I want to send a special shout out to Ms. Anna Hovey, who's sitting in the back for her contribution in the Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to thank you, thank you, thank you. And I also see other people in the audience that was able to help out, Ms. Elizabeth Hill, who's here tonight, and the Auburn Fire Department, who also came out to help distribute meals. By the time they got there, Ms. Hill had already distributed all the meals. But I want to thank them for showing up and being on time and just being a part. And I want to thank Al Davis for opening the, the Boykin Center for the seniors and the homeless and the disabled. And we had over 100 people that came out and they enjoyed the meals. And we had plenty, plenty, plenty. Thank you again, Ms. Anna, for, for your contribution.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you for all your hard work. It looked like you were having fun in the parade the other day.
Oh, I was. It was awesome. The kids really had, had the best time.
Okay, anyone else from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Due to the billing cycle, I do not have an update on the cost of Councilman Dixon's lawsuit. However, it was $37,065.31 as of the 31st of October. And this, these reports are in response to inquiries from the public. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to respond to Mr. Griswold's comments related to the short-term lawsuit that I have against the city. Mr. Griswold, for the past few months, you have given commentary regarding the cost of the litigation of the city. This litigation has, this litigation would have never began if this council didn't adopt one of the most discriminatory and unlawful ordinances in Auburn's history, given the rights to some in the community and then banning others. And it's discrimination at its finest. Mr. Griswold, you mentioned that this lawsuit is costing the city Mr. Griswold, you mentioned that this lawsuit is costing the city over $37,000. I ask the question, if the citizens of Auburn are truly benefiting from this ordinance, then the expense of this lawsuit is worth the investment, and your complaints are then unwarranted. If the lawsuit is not worth the investment for the ordinance to stand, then this ordinance should not exist. Mr. Griswold, this suit is far from over, but it can end very quickly if the council will decide to amend the short-term rental ordinance to be fair and equitable for everyone in the city of Auburn. I would not have filed this lawsuit if the ordinance was fair and equitable for everyone in the city. This council decided to pass an ordinance that benefits some and discriminates against others while also taking constitutional rights away from the citizens of Auburn. Mr. Griswold, I would not invest the tens of thousands of dollars this suit is costing me if I wasn't certain that I'm going to win. I read everything that is in the papers and social media about me, and there's one fact that everyone needs to know. This lawsuit is not about me. In fact, I'm not even going for financial damages. This lawsuit is strictly about getting rights back to the citizens of Auburn, and I will fight this all the way through the legal system, taking it all the way to the Alabama Supreme Court if I have to. Mr. Griswold, if you want me to stop my lawsuit against the city of Auburn, do what is right. Bring this back up for a vote, making short-term rentals fair and equitable for everyone in the city of Auburn. Then and only then will I drop my suit against the city of Auburn.
Anyone else on the council have an announcement?
Mayor, I got an announcement, but I'm not going to sit here and take that. Stephen, you're totally off-base with what you just pulled. He's got a right to talk about how much money has been spent, just like you've got a right to sue us, evidently, if you want to. But to act to yell like you just did in here, that's totally unprofessional. That's not Auburn. I've been working on my 35th year serving this city, and you're not showing yourself to be a good Auburn person tonight, what you're doing. If you want to sue, get your attorney to sue, or you want to. But I will not sit in here and listen to you bar-breather everybody because we don't agree with what the majority voted in, Stephen. That's the way it works. If you want to change it, then you get enough votes next time to go your way. You don't jump and do a lawsuit, but you got that right to do it because this is America. And I support your right to do it, just like I support his right to say how much the citizens' money has been spent on the lawsuit. So pitching a fit thing, don't get it. That's what you just did. You had a little temper tantrum because you didn't like what he was doing. I have supported you from day one. You're right to do it. And I don't believe you are doing what you're doing, but I support your right to do it because this is America, and you got that right. And you and I go way back, Stephen, way back. And I've tried to understand where you're coming from in this, but what you just did was out of line, way out of line. Thank you. Now, to go with what I was going to say, my announcement was, I appreciate what the citizens, employees have done. There's another, I'm so mad right now, I can't speak plain, but anyway. I appreciate what our employees did as another football season comes to conclusion. Our police, I know what it's like to direct traffic hours upon hours, and I appreciate what you do. The folks that keep the streets clean, I appreciate what you do. And I've yet to drive through town and see what was not clean, and we just do an excellent job. I've been to a lot of schools, a lot of games in different SEC schools when I was working, Public Safety, and we do one of the best jobs that anybody ever does. And I just appreciate what you go through every year during football season. And as it comes to a close, I thank you for your hard work and what you're doing. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chief. Absolutely. We had a great Iron Bowl weekend. There was a lot of people in town, and everything went well. Couldn't have done that without our police and all of our employees. Anyone else on the council have an announcement?
I just want to give a quick shout-out to the folks at the Goos Center. I had the opportunity to see the Nutcracker three times because my daughter was in it this weekend. I am an expert, if anybody has any questions about the Nutcracker. But and to Stacy Young in Variations Dance Studio, there's a lot of kids, a lot of dancers, all ages, a lot of folks, and a lot of people I saw there watching their kids. Just a fantastic, and it was nice, had the whole family go and enjoy the Goos. That's a great thing to have in our community. The customer service is just fantastic. We just had a really good time, and I was just reminded of how wonderful it is that we have that partnership with the university and very thankful that we had a good time at the Nutcracker. Again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer about the Nutcracker.
You're a lucky man.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else in the council? Okay, we'll move on to Auburn University Communications.
Hi, hope y'all are all doing well. I was in the Nutcracker many years, so I love the Nutcracker. I should go see it here. So students are wrapping up the semester. This is exam week, so we are trucking along, getting through it the best we can. I don't know if y'all know Octavia Spencer. She's an Auburn alumna, Academy Award-winning actress. She's actually providing a lot of free meals this week for students, so we've been taking advantage of that as well. That's really great of her to do that. Graduation is this weekend, December 10th and 11th. It's in Jordan-Hare Stadium, and I think it starts at 5:00 PM on Friday, so if there's a little bit extra traffic than normal, that's probably what that is for. And then our AU10 marketing materials, which is the 10% off in a lot of participating businesses in Auburn, those are coming in January, so we'll get those out to businesses no later than the 1st of February. So we're really excited to do that because we'll have a lot of new transfer students in the spring. And then lastly, we just wanted to thank y'all for breakfast last week. That was great. We had a really productive morning, and we're excited to start connecting Auburn students to the Police Department more in the fall, uh, spring. So that's all I have. Thank you. I'm where you go.
Okay, thank you. Good luck on finals. We'll see you in January. All right, this opportunity is for citizens to speak to the city council about items that are on tonight's agenda. Remember, this is only on items that are on tonight's agenda. We do have a couple of ordinances at the end of the agenda tonight that will have a public hearing involved with that, so please wait till then if you'd like to speak to the council regarding the ordinances. But if there's anything on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to speak, and we just ask for you to come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And seeing no one, we'll move ahead. City Managers Communications.
Good evening, Mayor. Under City Managers Communications, we have the announcement of two vacancies on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. One regular vacancy and one supernumerary vacancy. The three-year terms begin January 21st, 2022, and end January 20th, 2025. The appointments will be made at your January 4th meeting. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes.
Item 8D1.
8B1?
D.
D1?
D, as in dog, one.
8D1, all right.
8B.
8B.
Okay, anyone else?
You did say 8D as in Delta 1.
Yes, yep, and then 8B. Anyone else? Okay, we'll start with 8B.
All right, 8B. Item 8B authorizes the waiver of residential trash collection fees that are normally assessed for trash/debris piles that exceed five cubic yards. And we also call that trash amnesty period, and that would run from March 14th, 2022 through April 9th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Have a motion and second any comments or questions. Mr. Smith?
Just wanted to emphasize that and for the ability for folks to, if they've got anything, to do some spring cleaning, to be able to know that they don't have to necessarily pay a fee to get that out of their house.
Yeah, and our environmental services team has been doing this for many, many years, and one of the key things, they try hard to schedule. If we put it over spring break, people then say, well, it was over spring break. We couldn't do it. And Katrina and her team worked very hard to get this scheduled post-university and city school spring break and hit a window. We did shorten it slightly this year, six weeks previously, and we're back to about four weeks. And that is also to keep our crews picking up the rest of the city. We needed to shorten the timeline just slightly because, as you know, we've been running a little behind with the volume of leaves lately. They've all fallen at once, and our team is doing all they can to keep on schedule. You're also, you have later on the consent, some new equipment for them that will help tremendously with getting caught up. So, but this is a great thing we do, and our citizens appreciate it.
If I may say one more thing, too. In watching recycling and trash pickup, it's one of the most professional crews, at least in my area. I've seen trash come out. I've seen guys stop and pick it up, not leave stuff on the roads with debris when people are putting leaves in the, it's amazing the efficiency and the professionalism in customer service. Always waving, always, it's just, it's very nice. It's a nice thing. If it wasn't done right, it would be a mess. The city would be a mess, and it's just really nice. We've got good folks doing it.
Yes, we do.
I'd like to echo what Councilman Smith says. That's so true. They do an excellent job. I've had it for years. I've always been impressed with the work effort they put forth, and it's...
And they work in all kind of weather, all kind of temperature.
Yeah, all kind of weather, and it just shows great leadership in that department, so I really do appreciate that.
They do, and they're also dealing, I mean, next year, we're changing the Thanksgiving schedule and some other things because citizens get much confused, and so they will take Thursday off but work Friday to work through. And so these men and women work when a lot of people aren't working, and they're very much appreciated.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, 8D1.
All right, item 8D1 authorizes additional match funding for the resurfacing widening, traffic signals, and drainage improvements project on South College, Sanford Avenue, Gay Street, and Reese Avenue. And Miller Avenue should also be included. The total project cost is estimated to be $6.6 million, and the total city match funding is estimated to be, at this time, $3,9,413. This city match amount is $585,405 higher than was approved in the biennial budget.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Questions?
Okay.
Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, I would just want to pull this off the agenda because I just want to explain, maybe explain to the public, you know, this $3 million cost and what it all entails.
So I'll hit the highlights, and then City Engineer Fraser will give you a scintillating update, once again, about what I missed. It's her night, so. In general, and in English, because staff sometimes likes to speak technical, we are adding an additional southbound lane on South College. So right now, there's a right-turn lane, one through lane, and one left-turn lane. We're adding a second through lane, which will help with traffic conditions in that area tremendously. At Sanford and College, you're going to get some pretty decorative crosswalks, and you're going to get a really nice sidewalk behind the president's mansion that we have wanted to build for years that will take you to the arboretum. There isn't sidewalk on that side of College Street. And so that also means when you're at the intersection of Sanford and College, pedestrians can cross in all four directions. Right now, there's only crosswalks in two directions, and that will help tremendously with some traffic flow. We do have a lot of people that park and walk in that area. You're also going to get an improved sidewalk along Sanford, between Sanford and Gay. We're redoing the intersection at Sanford and Gay, including some drainage. We've had drainage challenges for years in that area, and that's why we've had all this fancy utility work going on for months on end and why people call City Hall pretty frequently and ask, when are we going to resurface Sanford and Gay? We are waiting for this very project so that the road's about to get torn up again if we proceed with this project. We're also putting a nice median in on South College Street, a pedestrian crossing at the heart of Auburn Development. If you ever eat lunch at BurgerFi, you will notice that people play chicken across South College a good bit. It's a very dangerous situation, and right around, you know, right across from Funchess is where that would go, and that's been a much-needed improvement. I also believe we are doing decorative crosswalks down at Miller Avenue. And then you're also not in the base bid because of pricing. We will redo a lot of lighting in the area. The electrical conduit is going in for this project to allow some changes to that. And then things like at the Gay Street intersection, there will be turn arrows now that we don't have today, which will help with our peak hour traffic flows. We've done some timing changes there with the university coinciding with their Mel Street traffic signal, and it's much improved if you traverse the area at the peak hour, but it has a ways to go. And then you'll get some improvements in other smaller sections of sidewalk near the Alumni Center and other things that don't exist today. But it is a comprehensive and massive project, and half of the funding for this is coming from grant funds through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the other half is coming from the city. But in 2016, we approved, I think it was about a little over $900,000 in match funding, and those costs escalated into the $2 million range that you approved in the biennial budget, and a little over $2 million. And now, we're asking you for additional $585,000. City Engineer Fraser, though, it did bid, and we have bid numbers.
We did. We had one bid received on December 3rd.
And so these numbers are accurate to our match at this time, minus pedestrian lights?
Yes.
So pedestrian lights, we would likely put in the biennial budget to come back to you later. They were a very expensive undertaking, and we thought we could get them for about half the price of what they were on the bid, so we actually had to rebid this to get that item out.
But what about Reese Avenue?
Reese is the end. It's kind of where some improvements begin, whether it be sidewalk.
We're tying down to Reese with sidewalk and resurfacing and drainage. But we recent, I say recently, within the past, I don't know, six or seven years, we resurfaced Gay Street up to Reese. So this will connect to that joint.
Okay, so Miller is not included in this list, but it's...
Yeah, yeah, Miller, there's improvements. This is just what it's titled in an AL document, but the improvements go down to Miller. So you've seen the median in front of the hotel at Auburn University, and this kind of carries median improvements on down, and we'll complete the median on College from Sanford all the way to Magnolia.
So it's included in that $3 million also, ma'am?
That's all the question I have about that.
Good. Anybody else on the council have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Councilwoman Taylor, for pulling this. I was going to do the same, but for slightly different reasons. Recently, in Ward 6, residents on Marion Circle, which run off of Gay Street, have, the timing is interesting insofar as they've been having some drainage issues. There is a section of watershed that runs from the intersection of Reese through private property down parallel to Gay Street. Then it crosses Gay, goes through the 600 and 800 block of Gay Street, and there are a number of residents who have concerns about the implication of these street improvements and what it means to the drainage. They already, in heavy rain, get flooded. The basement of one of the residents on Marion Circle has a sump pump, and occasionally, in heavy rain, it does get flooded. And the drainage is such, it's like a, just an open, natural, nearly like a creek bed, but it's small, but it does get overwhelmed. And with the increasing development on the hill from Sanford through to Reese, the implications of this development and what type of load, extra load it puts on this watershed is of grave concern for these residents. And I was hoping that you might be able to, Engineer Fraser, give me a brief overview of how your recent meeting went, and did they voice their concerns, and were their concerns legitimate in relation to this development?
Real quick, in an overview, there's, and just a general knowledge about drainage is, there are natural drainage areas throughout the city or long-existing ones where people will, and citizens get confused and say, well, you don't have an easement, and water from other people's property is going through here. And yes, there are a lot of areas of Auburn where property was developed well before major stormwater regulations were in place, and there are a lot of areas that water's been running through for many years, people's property. There's open ditches, and there are also times that we've dealt with citizens where we will not be allowed on their property to maintain, nor to get easements from them to do better. So there's much that goes on in our older neighborhoods and challenges with drainage. In terms of new development, ignore the intersection project right now and just say there's a contemplated development there. They will have to deal with their water and additional water, and a lot of that, as is at the heart of Auburn Development, as it sands today, is an underground detention system. They have big, orange corrugated pipe that is underground that retains or detains their water for periods of time. We've long had a major drainage issue at Sanford and Gay Street, to the extent it has flooded the adjacent businesses, especially some that are on the lower end of the south-side retail strip. So part of, part of the whole intention of the Gay and Sanford improvement piece was if we're going to tear up this intersection, we must fix the drainage. City Engineer Fraser?
Yes, so as Megan mentioned, part of the project will be to reroute water coming down Sanford from the heart of Auburn that currently goes under the Willie's Wings and Amsterdam Building. It's the same amount of water. In response to the residents' concerns, we are going to revisit our, not to speak engineers, but exit velocities to make sure the water's not any faster, hopefully, than the current conditions. But we don't anticipate any more water, just a different route to get to where it's always been going.
And that route will include Reese through that little wooded lot there on, between Reese and Marion?
Yes, I believe we're upgrading the pipe under Reese, but there's currently a pipe there now that discharges through a ditch that eventually goes under Marion Circle, as you mentioned, down Gay Street to Woodfield and beyond.
Right. Are there possibilities for relief in those, in that section that runs parallel with Gay Street on that Marion Circle corner, particularly there in that low point?
Not as part of this project, but that's one of the things we'll look at. And if it's something that's viable, that will be something we put in our budget requests. And if it's something that's viable, that will be something we put in our budget requests to the City Council next year.
Okay. I have another question. In terms of the timeline of this development, I noticed that they're numbered one through four. Is that a chronological number in terms of you'll begin the project of one in being on the college, the college median?
You're talking about how the timeline for construction and where they will begin and then...
Yes, this, this whole project. I'm sorry if I didn't, wasn't clear on that.
One to four on the diagram submitted with the council packet.
Yes, no, that's just a diagram to show what the improvements are. The contractor will actually, we've put a traffic control plan in the assembly, but we'll work with the contractor to actually get a phasing and issue probably multiple press releases and figure out how they intend to build it.
A difference with this project also is we, you approved a contract months ago that we have a project manager, a private sector project manager, one of the solutions that we're looking at. And City Engineer Fraser's been working very hard to move these projects along. Yes, our road projects get a little slow as we intend to have somebody on site all day, every day, that that is their job that we're paying them to do is keep this project moving. And from a staff capacity standpoint, we often hire the private sector to do that. So one of the things that she suggested early on was we're going to have somebody on staff that is in the contractor's ear, watching traffic control, watching all the things all day, every day. This is a huge coordination with Auburn University. The ebb and flow of football season, graduations and other things are not lost on us, but there is no good time to do this work, like most work. So there'll be a lot of coordination. And we also have a new and exciting layer to deal with of ALDOT that also because of the grant funding, then that's also why we hired the third-party consultant, was also to handle with the paperwork load of that. To get that $3 million, much goes into it.
Just of these recent few days, it's just been coincidental that this, that this item is before us and these questions have arisen. They are quite separate, separate to one another and many of the residents who have been contacting me weren't aware of this agenda item before us tonight. And so I was wondering, I've got a couple more questions. One resident on the 800, the 600 block of Gay Street on the, on the east, on the western side of Gay Street had problems in the past where the water ran so violently that it threatened to undercut his foundations of his home. And I was wondering, what type of relief, in what way can residents seek relief in the event that excess water does structural damage or even cosmetic damage to their property, to their homes?
Anyone is welcome to reach out to us at any point. We now have the Fix It app or they can call our office to ask us to come and evaluate a situation. In some cases, if it's on private property, it's not the city's responsibility, but our staff is always willing to look and to give advice and offer suggestions if, if there's a problem. We typically look at flooding and structural damage differently, if you will, than just if someone's yard is flooding.
The residents may argue that the way that the water is routed is as a result of the engineering done by the city. Is that, is that, do you understand what I'm saying? Is there, is that a valid argument for a resident who was, whose residence has become overwhelmed by water?
People tend to think, I don't want, this will sound bad, that everything's the city's fault. Development standards have changed. Megan mentioned that just a little bit ago. I've been here almost 25 years and the regulations have changed considerably since I've been here. What was done probably 50 years ago could not be done today. We have measures in place to mitigate stormwater impacts, infrastructure impacts, roadway impacts. Those things are our current practices and policies that we have. So I can't speak to how things got to how they are, but we're doing our very best as staff not to exacerbate downstream conditions or make adverse situations worse.
Thank you. I have one other question. And as, as these two issues came up simultaneously for me, I think there is a fair amount of concern from the residents that the vote on this tonight seals their fate that they are going to have a lot more water visit the downstream section. And I was asked to ask the question, what are the implications should we postpone this vote by two weeks in order for more questions to be asked by these residents?
I'd say these are two very separate issues. This project has been on the books since 2013. It's very surprising to me that the residents didn't know about it. It was originally approved as an A-Trip Round Three project, for those of you who've been around for a while. From 2013, we went through funding changes. When the Moore's Mill Bridge project came about, the funding that was assigned to this project was shifted to Moore's Mill and I think that was through this body. So I would say those two things are very separate and for me, I'd like to keep it separate. ALDOT would like this project, they'll probably call me before the end of this week to ask, what is the city's decision to either move the project forward? When we had the bid in September, they were concerned that if we delayed the project a long time, they would not have their match funding, which would then put us into another cycle of waiting on ALDOT to get their portion.
And City Engineer Fraser, from the funding standpoint, one of our challenges, and we've been working with the mayor on this and the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Auburn Opelika area suffers from, we have this money earmarked with ALDOT, but it, just because it's earmarked doesn't mean it's actually available to us at the time in which we need it. So we're in a very challenging timing crunch and I am one of the main reasons why we rejected the initial bids, because I didn't feel upon the recommendations of our city engineer that I could come to you with a $1.8 million price tag on some pedestrian lights for this project that we needed to. Infrastructure was going to cost what it was going to cost, but when we knew we could save a million, $800,000 to a million dollars on that, that's why we rebid, to save that money. But timing-wise, this other issue does run parallel. But there have been, with some of the residents that have reached out lately, there have been long-term discussions about things and, for many, many years. And, and so, you know, there's much and some of this area brought into play comes from the East Sanford School area and there's much more in the drainage basin. And I think longer discussions will have to be had about the drainage basin and what happens, what happens there. I can guarantee you, ALDOT reviews all of our plans against very stringent standards as well. And if their name is on it, it has to meet those standards or we wouldn't, we wouldn't have been out to bid.
Thank you. So when you're saying you see them as two separate issues, you see the first issue being this, this development in partnership with ALDOT and then addressing downstream concerns of the, of the Ward Six residences? Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
And I'd ask Megan her follow-up, Bob, to that and something that Allison mentioned earlier, if this is something that has been ongoing for, for years through some, not being rectified by, by developmental standards as they've been updated because nothing's going on over there, could this perhaps be an opportunity with new development, new work going on to rectify some problems that are, you know, bring some of these problems up to standards that are, you know, current, that might...
Yes.
...be otherwise overlooked?
You've got a large project looming at Sanford and Gay Street and there's been some homes that were removed that, that had water, low-lying water. Actually, when Heart of Auburn was redeveloped, some of that improved slightly because they were holding on to water that they, that previously was just sheet flowing everywhere. But I think also there's some merit in some of this getting corrected and done the right way to modern standards.
That's all I mean, rather than, than this is aspirating a problem, perhaps this could be an opportunity to solve some because there's been no, no redevelopment or new, new work going on in this area.
Yes, and the residents...
As far as, you know, a comment to the residents that, you know, rather than...
The residents in that vicinity, though, have also had a number of issues with the work that's gone on to date, which is there's been open trenches, there's been AT&amp;T fiber line was hit that put a big chunk of Auburn out for weeks at a time. I mean, it's been challenging at best and a lot of utilities in this area are old and unknown. And so I can understand that they've been frustrated with some things. Fortunately, the utilities relocation is basically done and we've also hit a gas, there's been a gas main hit, there's been all kinds of things. And I think to your point, Councilperson Hovey is, that we'll be hopeful, but we'll be evaluating those things and they're also looking at other things in the Wrightsmar Road area that we need to look at more closely.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the council?
When we're making these street improvements and talking about the crosswalks and that, can we look at using those brighter reflectors? Why don't, why don't we use those around the city, particularly on South College Street?
Brighter reflectors?
Well, I had, I was fortunate enough to go to Callaway Gardens last night with my grandson and family for a lights deal. But that road going over there is so well lit with the reflectors down the middle of it. I've never seen that around Auburn. Certainly Georgia can't beat us in that area too. So...
They, they just redid that whole road, chief. And so they just widened it to four lanes and then where it narrows down and resurfaced the whole thing.
Can we look at that, see if we, maybe we get those yellow reflectors in the city of Auburn some? See what it costs?
We can look at that, yes.
Yes. It's not like our snow removal equipment is scraping them off the road. So yes, we should be able to, we should be able to locate some. Do you have any other questions?
Appreciate, Chief, bringing up the menacing lights. It's a great time for your family. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Have a move to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda carries. Ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A is a request from the City of Auburn Planning Department to make various zoning ordinance text amendments to correct references to zoning ordinance sections and city departments, as well as to relocate certain regulations to more logical sections. This is the second reading of this item. A public hearing is required.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. All right, anyone? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing a hearing, none, with the roll call?
I actually have, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I just wanted to just publicly voice some of my interpretations of this and make sure that I'm understanding exactly what's happening here. The parking regulations have not been altered, but simply moved to more appropriate sections. Is that correct?
Correct.
The other question that I have, I was wondering if you could, I know it's, it's tangent, tangential to the actual change, the amendment here, but I wonder if you could explain the origins of the parking section concerning leasing with the city? I remember in a, in a, a development agreement in the past, there, there was discussion about, in this particular agreement, where parking would occur because there was a, there was a, a compromise made in a development agreement that reduced the amount of mandatory parking spaces. And, and at that time, in the discussion, it was that the city would, would not be available to provide any additional parking per that particular development agreement in a downtown hotel situation. But yet in this, the language of this, the parking section concerning leasing with the city, it, it seems to speak contrary to that.
So this language was inserted, at one point in time in the urban core, no parking was required for residential whatsoever. It had been in there and it was removed sometime in the early 90s. And then it was put back when something called the Parker Building was built in downtown Auburn where Cas Fitness used to be. And the notion was, oh my gosh, a new residential building went up with 16 units and there is zero parking for it. And so the council and planning commission at the time asked staff to take a look at it and wanted a parking requirement to be put back in. Well, rewinding way back to when Magnolia Plaza was built, one of the reasons the city built the parking deck is we had an agreement with Magnolia Plaza that they would lease spaces in there. At the time, a parking deck was unprecedented and that was actually slated to be, what is it, three more stories, Philip? It's actually slated to be a five-story parking garage. And city manager at the time and others were concerned if we build a five-story parking garage in the Gay Street area, people think we were crazy back in the 80s when we did that. So, you know, fast forward, we're almost 80,000 people and here we are. But when we looked at putting parking, parking regulations back, we heavily studied that. I was part of a staff team that, that worked on those and I would have the planning director speak to it, but he was not here at the time. And so part of a team, and our notion was that we thought we would public-private partner with people along the way to deliver public parking. We didn't know we'd build the Wright Street parking deck and the hope was that we would have public-private partnerships or public parking decks in major blocks in downtown and that one of the things we would do, instead of having everybody at their own parking deck, we would have bigger ones and we would share them. And that, that notion didn't come to fruition, but this is in here saying, if we decided in the future to lease portions of the Wright Street parking deck long-term or the, or the existing municipal parking deck, we could do so. Right now, any lease that we have, including with Magnolia Plaza tenants, is month-to-month and we have the right to cancel it at any time because that also gives us the ability to redevelop the property should, should the city decide to do so. So while this is in here, it has not been invoked because we didn't feel that we had the excess parking to do so. Also, there has been quite a sentiment about multifamily housing in the downtown core and the notion that if you're going to build it, you should build your own parking because the public then won't have access to this parking. So that is kind of where we're sticking. So this, this requirement's been left in as a possibility because you never know as things change and continue to redevelopment, we, we may want this option. And right now, without it, we might not be allowed. We want to allow people to share in parking and create it in the urban areas off-site and that includes ourselves if, if that's something we choose to do.
Okay, thank you.
But to clarify, there is no development agreement in the urban core with the hotel? None?
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Arson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B is a franchise renewal request from Zio Group LLC. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion, seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing, none. We'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mayor, we have no resolutions, so those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to address the City Council about anything that might be on your mind. You'll have three minutes to do that and we ask that you give your name and address for the record. Remember that your comments should be addressed to the council and not to a member of the staff or the city manager.
I tried to come up three times, Mayor. Sorry about that.
Third time's a charm.
When you get old like me, it's just part of life. I wanted to reiterate the stuff about...
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Robert Wilkins, I'm at 261 Denson Drive, Auburn.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to address the short-term rental ordinance again. I realize you voted on it and so forth, but I, I just want to reiterate some things. Also, I want to thank Mr. Griswold for corresponding with me, I think, five different times. I appreciate that. And then you did respond and I own 14 businesses, so I know about legal issues and why you can respond. But one of the things I wanted to talk about, and I'm trying to be ugly to the mayor, but the STR, the Short Term Rental Task Force, something I didn't quite understand is the task force included the mayor, two council members, two planning committee members and three citizens. Two of those are involved in development corporations. The other one was a, someone who was at the pharmaceutical professor at, at the university. I heard that maybe she did some short-term rental at one time, but I know one of the development people despise the idea of anything like Airbnb or any of the other ones. And I just thought that that was an awful one-sided. When you ran for transparency, I don't consider that transparency. So I thought it was a bad way to, to run that and I just want to let you know. Also, nationwide, there's a lot of stuff that says, don't hotel our neighborhood. I'm a hundred percent agreement, 100%. I don't want my, my community, you know, done as a hotel, but I just have a four-bedroom house. I think Mr. Dixon has a, a one-bedroom suite. So how, how can that be a hotel? And you talk about commercial. Technically, yes, it's commercial because there's... Technically, yes, it's commercial because there's trans, we're, you know, getting money for service, but there's all kinds of things that are in communities that have been done for many, many years. When I was a kid, I took music, music lessons with my band director who taught me piano at his house. You know, I, we have yard sales. I've had a yard sale, change, changing money. So it's commercial, but is it really commercial? This thing is a community activity. It is good for the community. Most of the people who, oh gosh, I'm, I gotta go. I, also, I wanted to talk about, I wish you'd give me about three more minutes, but I guess I can't do that. The ordinance, there are too many ordinance in every city. If you want to be the greatest mayor and the greatest council ever, get rid of a lot of the ordinance, evaluate each one, get a real task force that affects those people and go through those and, and get rid of them. And because it's supposed to be easier for the city. At the same time, we want ordinance to take care of things and do not cause problems. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to speak before. I guess I'm gonna have to come back in two weeks, so, because my time is up. Thank you.
Mr. Wilkins, if you'd just stand right there, I want to address something.
Okay, no problem.
You know, when we were all elected, this was a big issue. And I told the citizens of this city and I told the council that we were gonna do what we could to give Auburn a philosophy and give Auburn a, you know, a rule on this, which right, with that time, we were operating, we weren't operating with any rules. It was just going on. I've never been a mayor before and it was my opinion that forming a task force was the best way to get this community involved, to get the council involved and us to find some kind of ground zero that we could build from so that ultimately Auburn could have a rule that was probably gonna change over time. I was never a mayor before and so my thought was, I'm gonna form a task force. I put two council members on there. One was someone who was a, probably a believer in Airbnb and VRBO and one was a little more reticent to it. They were, they had the liberty to find people, to find one person to join them. One asked somebody who was practicing in short-term rentals, one got somebody who was not, and me as the mayor, I asked a third person who was in the pharmaceutical business but had been operating a short-term rental. So if you want to look at those three extra people that were brought in, two were in favor of short-term rentals and one was not. There were planning commissioners that were assigned to this because that's what they do every day, is they look at the things that evolve in Auburn and the way we plan things that go on in Auburn. So it was very important that we have planning representation. I can't tell you it was the perfect way to solve this. We had public hearings, we had draft ordinances, we gave the public a lot of time to opine on this. Ultimately, we had to make a decision. History will say whether we made the right decision or not, and I have told people ad nauseam that this will not be the last time Auburn will ever deal with short-term rentals. We will deal with it again. It's gonna come up again. But we tried to get to a beginning round. I'm sorry you're disappointed with it and you have every right to be and I respect that, but don't come up here and tell me I'm not transparent.
Okay.
Because you're wrong there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to also respond to Mr. Wilkins, if you wouldn't mind if.
No, no problem. Thank you.
You mentioned that one of the citizens was vehemently against, and I'm presuming that you're talking about my choice on that short-term rental task force. I'd like to also address a couple of things. I am by no means anti-short-term rentals. I think the business model is excellent and the, my pick on the short-term rental task force also shares that opinion. There is no way that you, we can be classified as anti-short-term rental. We are certainly looking for the best opportunity to find a place within our city that can accommodate short-term rentals. And we immediately went to guiding documents such as the zoning ordinance to get a sense of what goes where in our city. And that was the fundamental guiding document that both of myself and my pick used in, in formulating policy, trying to find a way in which the activity of short-term rentals can occur within our city. We found 13 zones within our city that we, that you are able to conduct short-term rentals today. It's, the idea that it's illegal is a little misleading because you can have a short-term rental in the city and we worked very hard to find a way for that to happen. So, I just would, I just felt the need to answer your assessment of my pick and myself, actually, because there is no way that I'm anti-short-term rental, but I am very deliberate in how I go about trying to find a way for everybody to get something from this policy and I did my very best to do so. The idea that Councilman Dixon has gone to the paper recently and said, "We sat around and did nothing in the short-term rental task force," hurt me personally because I have invested countless hours comparing other cities' ordinances, countless hours in meetings with, privately with my pick, publicly in work sessions, answering countless emails. The idea that I did nothing and gleefully went, "Ha, ha, ha," is hurtful. It's not, it's not at all what was transpiring in, in my process. I was very deliberate. I took the task, task to me by the mayor, very seriously and I looked for the, the best for everybody in our city and I think I got as close as I could to doing that.
Yeah.
And I'm so, and I also am sorry that it has affected you in the way that it has.
Yeah, 'cause I will be at, well, I won't be at the court. The judge was kind enough, but my wife is not able to come, so we're doing a vroom, a room, a vroom, whatever that thing is.
Yes.
A zoom, zoom. Yeah, I knew, I knew, I'm thinking about cars, looks like, but anyway, we'll be, we'll be doing that, so I was, I appreciate it. I'm not sure why it's a miserable court, because all of you vote for that judge and it's, I, I'm not sure why that, you know, was brought before the court, but that's neither here nor there. And, but I appreciate your comment and I apologize, I said it, you might be upset, but I, I don't quite understand why there was not, you know, Airbnb people, why there were not other people that, that were affected greatly. And, and there's not really a disrupt, disruption. You know, the zone, most of these zonings were done, what, 20, 30, 40 years ago? And so you're building on them, but you, you haven't changed. Technology's changed. We didn't have the internet 30 years ago. We didn't have Airbnb 12 years ago. So you need to change with the times. Instead, you decided to divide it because one area is discriminating against saying, "We don't care what you think," but the other ones, "I'm in the conservative area, it's fine for the conservative area. We're too important. We're, you know, we're older people, we're whatever, we shouldn't be disrupted." So I just, I, I just think there should have been more thought and I apologize. I came here on, I think in 2018, when you had the first meeting, I thought it was over the money. I had no idea that it was gonna get into this, where you actually discriminate against one part of the town to the other. I had no idea. I should have come, that was my fault, you know, for, but thank you for letting me speak longer and I do appreciate it.
I think it's an unfortunate reframing that you're doing, using the word discriminate.
Okay.
I think we've always maintained that we are guided by zoning and the rhetoric of discrimination in this policy is a, a word that I take exception to.
Okay. Well, in my community, I have.
We appreciate it, Mr. Wilkins. I'm sorry I out stepped.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Mayor, I just, I'm, I'm glad that short-term rentals, excuse me, I'm glad that our student, student housing task force, you know, had our, had our little easy layup and moved on, so I do feel sorry for them. Thank you guys have to.
Then we slam dunked it on boards and commissions.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Andrews, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Herbert Walter Dimar Jr., 412 Opelika Road, apartment 111. My comments this evening are concerning the city redistricting plan that you're planning vote on at the next meeting. I presently live in Ward 4 on the Byrnes, on the Byron side of Opelika Road, Opelika Road. It's across Opelika Road from Uncle Charlie's and the salon, which is presently in Ward 3, I believe. And then there's the well-read area and the post office, which is also in Ward 3. And according to the proposal, it's gonna be in Ward 2. Now, I have nothing against any of you all on this.
Thank you.
But I, I do appreciate you all putting that together in one ward concerning compactness. Now, there's still the question of the demographic makeup compared to 2010, which leads me to my concerns about, as an African-American, the situation involving Ward 1. Now, I think if I understand it correctly, the area of Martin Luther King Park is not Ward 1 presently. The new plan puts Martin Luther King Park in Ward 1 as well as that area, you know, on that side of Martin Luther King Park. And that's where student housing is. And so I'm pretty much concerned about the makeup of that. And I noticed in the memorandum that the, that you all received from the city manager dated November 9th, we had a chance to get a copy last night at the community forum. In fact, thank everybody for setting that up at Boykin. I did not, it does not have a demographic breakdown for the wards based on the 2010 census. So no one has any idea what percentage was black, what percentage was white, what percentage was Asian, what percentage was whatever. And I would hope that you would ask for that information before you make the decision, hopefully at the, at your December 16, 4th session. I would personally like to know, or if there's information already available on that, let us know where we can find it in the city website. And in my area, there is a mixture, to say the least. And so I'm thankful again. And also for the record, based on Mayor Andrews' comments earlier, I got the booster shot last Friday.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who'll be next?
I gotta hand those. I need to hand them to it. I need 11 because.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I need 11 because.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. This is.
Who is this man?
I'm good evening, everyone. My name is Letitia Kalief. I reside at 2262 Heritage Ridge Lane here in Auburn and I'm the first VP of the local NAACP chapter here in Lee County. I would like to begin by saying thank you for the map that you proposed. As I shared with the members at the public hearing last night, I appreciated the effort that was put forth, specifically to be reasonably compact, to not put more than one incumbent in the same district, to preserve the core of the existing districts, as well as to preserve the communities of interest. All of that is great stuff. However, we would be doing our community a disservice if we did not talk about a couple of things. One, Auburn's population has grown 42.6% in the last 10 years since the last census. As a result of that population growth, Auburn's minority population is now 36.8, almost 37% of the total population. Mathematically speaking, if we were to take 37% multiplied by the eight wards, we get 2.96. And that would suggest that we need at least two council members to be representative of a non-white racial minority group, given that Auburn now has a significant black population, a significant Hispanic population, and a significant Hispanic and Asian population. So, I'm just asking you to look around and if you can answer this question, does the current council looks like what the data now says it should looks like? If the answer is no, then we are legally obligated to make a change. So why are we concerned about this? Because redistricting, when conducted fairly, it reflects population changes, racial diversity, and it gives everyone a voice in all of the wards. At the end of the day, it's also the law. In the 1960s, the Supreme Court held that the 14th Amendment guaranteed equality or voting power, one person, one vote. It also held that states that fail to allocate based on the basis of population is unconstitutional. Now, we know that's not where we are today, but we're asking you to slow this process down, meet with us, and let's discuss a new map. Can it be done? Can we get to minority-majority districts? Absolutely. And that is the information that we presented to you today. Is it ideal? Maybe, maybe not. But what we want to share with you today is that we have simply proven that it can be done, proof of concept. So, we appreciate all the work that you have done, but we feel like you can do more and we want to help because collectively, we believe that we can get to a map that is representative of our diverse community collectively for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Lee. I live at 1652 St. Andrews Lane in Auburn and I'm here to speak on the same issue. As a citizen here in, in the city, I believe, as Letitia pointed out, that we should really consider what we can do to be fair and equitable in our community, given the vast changes of the 2020 census. And so, as concerned citizens, we took a look at the demographic data from the 2020 census and found that there are ways to be able to be more equitable and more fair. And so, we, we would like to address the same concerns. We have indeed hired a cartographer, I'm not sure if I know what that really means, it's a map drawer, and someone who has a professional skills in this area. So with that, we, we did not know in the beginning whether or not the population would permit a second majority-minority district, but indeed it does. So with that, we ask your consideration for meeting with those of us who have worked on this for the last few weeks and consider how we can represent the population more fairly and in such a way that the citizens will benefit. Thank you.
Lee? Anyone else?
Hello and thank you for your patience. I know it's a long night, so thank you all for being here. My name is Tabitha Eisner. I live in Montgomery, Alabama. I can give you my address if you really want it.
Yes, we need it for the record.
Sure, no, no problem. I wasn't sure if that was limited to Auburn. It's 4349 White Acres Road, Montgomery, Alabama, 36106. I'm here because I'm working with the Lee County Chapter of NAACP on the reapportionment process here in the city of Auburn. I have a master's in public policy from the University of Chicago and nine years out of 10, I work as a policy data and technology consultant for state governments, mostly in the realm of childcare policy and child welfare policy. But once a decade, I devote my attention to redistricting and reapportionment. This year, I'm working with a variety of community groups, both in municipalities and statewide, to become more engaged citizens and to get involved in this critical process. Drawing maps, or heck, even talking about maps, is actually a really intimidating task. Most people do not consider themselves cartographers and don't feel comfortable even looking at a map. That's why groups hire me. It's not really because I have a master's degree, it's not really because I work in government services, it's really because I'm not scared to touch a map and to draw a map. to touch a map and to draw a map. So much about government is intimidating. We have heard lots of engineering terms, scintillating, scintillating engineering terms, lots of, um, technicalities, legalities, complex issues discussed as part of government. But this process has the possibility to be different. This process doesn't have to be intimidating, doesn't have to be us and them. This op, is an opportunity for the city to engage with citizens and talk about where is your community? How does your community think about itself? How does it work? How can we draw districts that more accurately reflect how you, as a city, understand yourselves? Think of yourselves as a community. So I hope you will take this opportunity to engage with the NAACP and other groups locally and make this a model of how government and people can work together to produce something new and exciting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, good evening. I'm Elizabeth Hill. It's two-seven-four Bragg Avenue. Um, I'm again going to speak on redistricting. Um, I will have to say, since I got on the NAACP committee in March about redistricting, it has been a fun process. It has been a process of learning something new, of learning new processes, of spending time with our lovely Tabitha Cartographer on how to draw maps, how to move things around. It's been a very engaging, fun process. And what I have learned is what Tabitha said. It's not as intimidating as you think, and we can make a map that will reflect our city. So when we got the census data, we were like, oh, this is very interesting data. The minority percent of minority population in Auburn grew. That should be reflected. Then we got the city map, and we're looking at the numbers and looking at this and looking at that and going, we don't think the city map actually currently does what the numbers say. Can we do better? So we called Tabitha. Tabitha says, well, it depends on where the demographics live, because we can't just go picking and choosing everywhere. We need to make a map that looks reasonable. And we're like, okay, well, can we do that? So Tabitha draws some demographics. She's like, yeah, we actually can. And we've given you a map. We're not saying this map is perfect. We're not saying you, you need to vote on this map. We're saying that we have proof of concept that two majority-minority districts can be drawn in this city. And we think that more fairly represents what the city is comprised of now in two thousand and twenty. And so through this process, we're like, okay, well, it can be done. We have proof of concept. So now we're here asking for your help, your collaboration on this process, to say, huh, we have a proof of concept in front of us. What do we do with this information now? So we want to be a part of the process. We're asking you to pause in this vote that's coming up on the twenty-first and say, wait a second. Maybe we don't need to vote on the twenty-first. Maybe we need to take more time. Maybe we need to review this. Maybe we need to go back and look at what has been offered. Look at what the city has done. Can we find a way to collaborate and move forward on this map? So our request is that you delay the vote on the twenty-first and that you return to the map and see if the requests that we have made for two minority-majority district can be done.
Good evening.
Evening.
Name is Joshua Lewis. I live at eleven oh-six Stage Road. Of course, that's in Auburn, Alabama. I am again, um, getting up here and speaking on behalf of NAACP on, uh, concerning redistricting and redrawing the map. Um, they have given you, my colleagues giving you your kudos and, uh, your attaboys and all of that. And, um, it's just due. Um, it's a lot of work that goes into that, and we appreciate all this has been done. Um, but if we can kind of tie this together and, uh, leave you with some thoughts on, on your mind here. Um, we wanted, I do want to be clear that, uh, Lee County, Branch fifty-thirty-eight of the NAACP is requesting that the Auburn City Council take additional time to collect public and legal input into the reapportionment of council districts and commit to prioritizing the creation and adoption of a map that prioritizes minority representation, um, in compliance with Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, um, which, which is there, uh, to make sure, um, in, that things that are happening, that maps that are being made, that practices, um, are not prohibiting voters or denying voters, uh, equal political power on the basis of race, color, or membership. Um, a, and with that being said, I do want to, uh, make mention, not to, uh, speak directly to, but make mention of what, um, our great Auburn city managers stated in the memo, that often, um, to be equitable, you know, if I can say that, um, this means drawing one or more minority-majority districts depending on the size of a jurisdiction's minority population. Auburn does not have a black population that is sufficiently large enough to result in a district with a voting age population that's majority black. However, Auburn does have a significant black population, a significant Asian population, and a significant Hispanic population. Um, as was stated before, um, there has been significant growth. I would, uh, claim to be significant, uh, within the last ten years, especially, uh, with the minority populations, uh, moving from twenty-six-point-five percent, um, to thirty-six, I believe, point eight percent. Uh, with that being said, um, I think that it is, um, it's not proper representation to have twelve-point-five percent speaking on behalf of thirty-six-point-eight percent. Um, it, it, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, minorities saw something in Auburn that made them want to move here, whether it was in the sites, whether it was in the sounds, whether it was in the school. Uh, either way, I know that they didn't move here to be silenced. And that is exactly what will happen if there is not a map that is drawn or redrawn, uh, with minority majorities in mind. Uh, not to say excluding anyone else, uh, but to make sure that there is proper representation. Think about the fact that from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, there has been exponential growth, right? So what I'm saying here to, to, in closing, is that as good as twelve-point-five percent can be, um, twelve-point-five percent cannot speak loud enough to cover thirty-six-point-eight percent. And so we need two minority-majority districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you.
Warren Tedwell, sixteen fifty-four Piedmont Drive. I apologize, y'all. I had my booster earlier today, and so this statement probably won't be as scintillating as it would have been. Uh, I want to start off by-
You're not an engineer by trade, are you?
Not at all.
Okay.
Uh, by offering up an apology to the mayor and to the council, um, because it seems like the only time I show up is when something big happens. Um, I'm, I work in civic engagement throughout the state. Uh, I'm a problem solver, so the fact that you haven't heard from me, Kelly, is a good thing, and I appreciate the job you've done so far. Um, that being said, Auburn is my home. Uh, it is a home and people in a place that I love. And I know that there are a lot of good folks within the city, representatives who want to get the redistricting right. And of course, that's why I'm here. And I'm speaking in my position as, uh, again, not feeling well, uh, as the Community Resilience and Outreach Coordinator for Hometown Organizing Project, who's also been working with the Alabama Election Protection Network to ensure fair and equitable maps throughout the state of Alabama. And I know that we all want that too. So it's a very simple thing that I come to y'all today with is, uh, requesting that we take the time that is available, uh, to get, to do this and get this right. Again, thank y'all for what y'all have done so far. Sincerely appreciate that. And, uh, I know that we can all work together. That's what this process is for, to figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kim White. My address is two-two-eight Conrad Drive in Ward Five. Um, I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of East Alabama. It's a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government with a focus on issues affecting voting and the democratic process generally. So the League of Women Voters of East Alabama would like to voice its support of the NAACP's proposal to create at least two majority-minority districts in Auburn. Having at least two of these districts would be expected, given that Auburn has a thirty-six-point-eight percent minority population according to the two thousand and twenty census. And the NAACP's work demonstrates that it is feasible to do so while meeting the other criteria for a fair and legal map. I'm also asking that you delay the vote, expected to occur on December twenty-first, to allow time to fully consider this alternative. In the committee of the whole meeting earlier, the mayor mentioned that some of these big decisions take a little extra time to consider fully. Um, and this decision is going to affect the way that we vote for the next ten years. So I think it's too important to be rushed. Um, but I really appreciate city staff's maps, um, and the open houses that were held. I went to the first one, and it was, it's great, very well done. And I appreciate all the work that went into that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Andrews, council persons. My name is Dr. Joanna Abram. I live and reside at two-zero-six Timberdale Court, of course, Auburn, Alabama. I am the president of the Auburn Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We have been here since, since nineteen seventy-eight. As the president, I will say that I also have resided here since the seventies as well. I date myself because I actually, I actually went to Boykin, what's now called the Recreations, and I was, I actually went there in the fourth and fifth grade, so I would date myself there. So in saying this, to be able to say that I have watched-
So did I.
I would date myself to say that in reference to watching how Auburn have grown, I truly appreciate each and every one of you what you have done thus far. I have been able to move away, been a military family myself, came back and now live here and have raised our children here. So in saying this, I am heavily concerned, personally, I'm heavily concerned and involved regarding to what's going to take place in our future here and how it's going to be best for my, for our children as well, because they are too planning to reside here. So I'm thankful for that. So I come before you now asking that you consider the voices and the worries and the concerns that have come forth thus far, that you take it to heart what they're saying, that you understand what they're saying, and take the time, actually take the time to delay the vote, to delay the vote until you are able to address the concerns of the residents who have already spoken here. Now, I say that to say and speak on this matter because the more we hear, the more questions we have, and we would just like the opportunity just to hear your heart to why you did what you did, so that we can thoroughly understand why the choices were made, so to, so that you can understand us and we can understand you. So again, as the president of the Auburn Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, we ask that you delay the vote in order to address some of the concerns of the residents they have already brought forth tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I got, I, 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 I like to be-
Mayor, are you going to close Citizens Communications, or you?
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Connie.
Okay, I, I got a few questions just from what I've, uh, oh, he, heard tonight. And, uh, you know, back when we had our meeting about these maps and everything, uh, I was almost convinced that, uh, that the city did the right thing. And I'm still, I'm, I'm not doubting this, what the city did, but I got more understanding as to how these maps was drawn up. And I have, um, I have three questions I'd like to ask on some of the, um, statements that was made here tonight. The first question is, okay, is there time to review the maps proposed by the NAACP? I know there is a six-month period between, uh, the time that we run again, if we're going to run, those are the, us that we'll run or won't run. So what is the time lapse? Um, I mean, what is that timeframe? Okay? And the second question is, um, was it considered by the city to consider another minority-majority district? Was it ever considered? Okay? And the third question is, how do the propose, uh, uh, oh, how do we, uh, postpone the vote? Uh, can we postpone our vote on December the twenty-first? I know the answer to that, but I just want to, want it, you know, I guess to be said on record. So, uh, and I'm, I, I, I'm curious to know because I find it quite interesting that if, if, if the, if those facts are out there, why, why didn't we ever consider those facts when the ma, maps were drawn up? Uh, I don't know enough about redrawing maps or anything, but I guess we have an expert in the house that does. We have some experts in the house from the city that does. So I would like to, you know, I, 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 I just, I'm, I'm, I'm really confused now, and it sort of, uh, breaks my heart to know if that was not considered, that there can be another minority, my, majority district. So can we have, I mean, so can I? I don't know how the other council feel about it. Can we have some type of explanation as to why this was not considered, or was it considered? Is my main, is my main question. And there was three questions, but that's the main one.
Counsel interested? Go ahead, Megan.
When, when, as we discussed with you in the workshop, when we embarked on this process, we followed the same process we've always followed, and we were following federal guidelines of being reasonably compact, not putting more than one incumbent in a, in a district, preserving the cores of existing districts, and preserving communities of interest while dealing with the fact that our existing wards had to change. That was the criteria staff followed. To clarify for everyone in the room, this city council did not propose this map. And I want to be very clear about that and intentional. You were, a map is proposed by state law by the city manager. The city manager used a team of experts on her staff, um, to generate that map with only federal criteria we were asked to utilize, and that is what we followed, period. We don't get to insert our opinions. We don't get to look at demographic data differently. We can't look at how many students are here or there, whatever. We have to purely follow the criteria, and that's what the staff did. Now, at the crossroads of things, it is up to the city council to make the final decision. Staff doesn't make that. We just recommend, um, and for you to consider things and, and that absolutely will be done. I'm kind of jumping in your questions. We'll make sure we get them all answered. The December twenty-first time ra, timeframe was to start the discussion. You really need to be finished with this by the first meeting in February because it has to be published legally, the new districts, and that's lengthy legal descriptions, um, once they're finalized. And it has to be published for it to be effective on the six months out that Councilperson Taylor mentioned prior to the election. So the December twenty-first date, and the reason I'm moving that forward, and it's legally advertised beginning tomorrow, is the date of a potentially a first public hearing is, is to get this out there that a process needs to be followed. As Councilperson Taylor indicated, she clearly understands the process, but wants to make sure I speak to it, is that's a unanimous consent ordinance situation. Um, there actually isn't a public hearing required associated with this, but absolutely, I'm going to advertise a public hearing and strongly recommend to you, and it'll be placed on your agenda that way that you have a public hearing. You've always been very staunch as a council about that, and the staff is as well. So be a public hearing. That would be the first opportunity. You can deny unanimous consent. It, uh, uh, you know, if that's what any one of you chooses to do, um, that ordinance automatically then comes back at your January fourth meeting. Um, you can continue the dialogue with that at that time. Um, you can vote on it. You can, a majority of you can postpone table or otherwise. Um, but I do strongly recommend you consider finalizing whatever your decision is, not later than, than the February first meeting.
And if we don't, then the August twenty-third vote, municipal election, will be based on the current wards.
Right. And we'll have a Ward Two of over fourteen thousand people. That's correct. Councilperson Griswold, this ward is quite large. So, um, also, in, in considering, um, Councilperson Taylor asked, you know, I just, I touched on that, the majority-minority, you, when retaining the existing cores of districts and making, when you look at the map, um, and you're making, uh, you're following arterial roads, creeks, railroad tracks, what have you, and making a map that people can follow in neighborhoods adjacent to other neighborhoods, lots of times are, are all together. Um, it also talks about preserving communities of interest. And one of the things is, um, neighborhoods and older parts of town has similar issues and concerns, as we heard about tonight from Councilperson Parsons, about storm drainage to what have you. And so all of those things went in. And also, um, while it is not always possible, it also is pretty clear, um, when you start, uh, redrawing the wards from their existing cores, you will also put, um, two sitting council members in the same ward, which is strongly recommended against. So the, the timing of the review, that was your other question, Councilperson Taylor, of the map. This is the first we've received of it. There, you know, there was mention of it last night at the, the, the two public meetings. I can tell you- I can tell you, we've had a total of 27 people drop by two, three-hour sessions. And of those 27 people, three of them attended both sessions. And we had ample staff to be sure that we could cover any group of citizens to come to try to answer questions. The website's been live and active. You will be getting spreadsheets that have every comment we've received by phone, by email, via the website, and social media that we can track. You're going to get spreadsheets that have everything that people have asked, if they wanted a response, if we've responded. And we're going to give all that to you, and I intend to get that to you next week. We'll cap it as comments as of Friday and send out the first mix of that. So there is no pressure on December 21st other than for you to begin a dialogue as a council about where you want to go with this. To the point of the new map, we will need a lot more than this page here. It has no streets on it and other things for us to- I'm sorry, I'm speaking to the council. We will need a lot more, which I'm sure, as we've heard, they would be willing to provide. That will have to be evaluated. We have a consultant that is retained through the city attorney's office that is an expert on redistricting as well, that reviewed all of this and said that we made and met every federal and state standard that we needed to meet, or I wouldn't have moved it forward in my recommendation to you. So we will evaluate any alternative maps that are put forward against the criteria that we used and provide that information to you. In terms of the choice of where we go with that, that will be up to you. We, staff will just provide you everything the public provides, and we'll evaluate that against the criteria and provide that information to you, and that'll be up to the council from there.
Going through that process, based on this not being an arbitrary process, but a deliberate process through a lot of vetting through federal and state law, what does the turnaround look like? You're talking, we've got a hard line to get this into place by the 1st of February. That's not, I mean, you can't, we can't give that any changes to the day before that, so-
Correct.
Two weeks, three weeks?
Yes, and it's much appreciated that, you know, tonight is the first time we've seen a map. Anybody else, we've been out there with our information since November 10th, and obviously, hard work has gone into looking at something else. We will evaluate everything as quickly as we can when we get enough data to evaluate. And so right now, this would be hard for us to follow because of certain data. We can certainly look it over and make guesstimates, but we would have to follow that, match it against the criteria. As the city attorney told you at your November 10th meeting, we will view this through with the consultant to make sure, you know, all things have been vetted and we have all information, and we'll get back to you, because when you move one line, it shifts everything in multiple wards, and there's multiple criteria that we're trying to achieve.
And if you shift lines, that would cause that recalculation of everything to start over. Is that correct?
Deviations and all of the above. That's correct.
Thank you.
Can we give the NAACP an opportunity to present this to us at a meeting? This is, you know, like you said, first time I've seen this map. So I would really like to learn more about what they have presented to us today, and I think that would help us make a decision.
You have the ability in public hearings. You don't have a time limit when you're in a public hearing on what you wish, and that's open to all citizens of Auburn.
Would they have an opportunity to bring the presentation on our computer screens and that kind of thing, so we can-
We have procedures set forth, as long, if that's a regular council meeting day and it's a big PowerPoint, we're supposed to have it. I mean, typically, you allow, it's your procedures by noon on a council meeting day, because we've got, you know, we load and we want to make sure it works, and that allows us to provide service to the citizens, but that's up to you. Usually, the council, because everything's a public meeting, you know, it would be at the council's discretion that you would give any group. And so that's why we recommend in the public hearing realm that you consider that, unless you want to call a work session with an open public hearing, and that's for dialogue with the council. That's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
One other question I want to ask, okay, and just make me to understand. So it will have to be the December 21st meeting that we'll have, if we decide, or someone on this council decide they want to table it, it have to be tabled once it's on their agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
And so we're legally advertising to start there. And the ask is, you know, that you have made some form of decision by February 1, and staff is here to provide information to you. But our recommended map is before you, based on the criteria that was set forth. And so changes will be up to the council from there. We will be able to provide you information against criteria with regard to proposed changes, and that will be up to you guys, if you want to change, the majority of you.
But if we deny unanimous consent at December 21, we would not hold a public hearing that evening. It would be moved to potentially-
Yeah, that's at your discretion. Yeah, you may decide you want to hold one, may not. That is up to the majority of you what you would like to do. Yeah, typically, your procedure is, when you deny unanimous consent, it just moves automatically with the public hearing to the next meeting.
Right, because we're not voting on deliberation, we're not in deliberations.
I have another question. And I think I just need to hear it said more than anything. The redraw, if we hypothetically redrew the map to accommodate this type of request, and it was possible and so on, that doesn't preclude anybody else from running in that ward, correct?
Correct.
A demographic minority could run in any ward.
Absolutely.
Regardless of how it's drawn. Take myself, for example. I appear to be the majority, but soon as I open my mouth, I am a minority. I am an obscure minority in that I'm an immigrant, and I act accordingly. So I think that's a wrinkle also to consider that all wards are up for grabs if you want to run. And as I did, as unlikely as it is, I do add to the diversity of this body, simply because of I'm not born here.
And that's correct. You know, if you meet the criteria, which is also out there on our website, and it talks about qualifying for the election in June. It talks about when, you know, how long you have to live somewhere, which is a pretty short time period. We've dealt with that in the past to qualify. But it talks about that, and as long as you meet those criteria established in state law, anybody is welcome to run in any ward and for mayor, which is the only at-large position we have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question as well for the city manager. So at some point, we're going to have to vote on a map.
That's correct.
The end product map. You've received lots of input on various changes here and there, a whole new concept that was presented this evening. How do you envision us getting to that bottom-line map that we're going to wind up voting on? I mean, are you going to say, these are the list of comments, and we recommend this one goes in, this one doesn't go in? At some point, we have to have something to vote on.
Understood. And, you know, to my knowledge, in the past, we have brought a map forward, the council's voted on it, and that's been the map in recent memory. I've only been here a little over 24 years. But the last time we did this in 2011, that's what happened. We had a number of public hearings and so on, and we went through the process. We can walk through that with you. I think what's important to me, because I want to make sure, you know, we've provided all these forums for people to comment, is that you see all the comments. It's been very important to me from day one, and I know that's what your expectation is. So you'll see all of that, and you'll see our responses. I'm here at all times to talk to you, but ultimately, I'll give you a laundry list of changes, and the majority of you are going to have to decide if there are five of you, if all nine are present, wanting to move forward with any changes. But at this time, and based on the advice of our legal counsel and our consultant, the only map the staff has proposed at this time is that district map. I don't expect, you know, I put that out there from hereforward. It'll be your decision. If there are changes, we'll just talk to you about the legal merits of changes, and if they meet criteria. And to what we got tonight, as soon as we, you know, we'll share this with our legal counsel immediately. But until we get more data, which obviously has been stated as forthcoming, we can't give you a true analysis of it, and it'll ultimately be up to you. And you'll have that chance to have the dialogue with our attorneys about it as well.
So do you anticipate us seeing a map different than what's already been provided?
Well, you've got this secondary map, and we'll show it, well, you know, you've got it already, but we'll get more details and we'll provide our analysis of that. And if five of you want to change to that map after you've heard all the input from staff and legal counsel, that will be up to you.
Well, I really-
Yeah, staff's not going to recommend changes, per se, that I know about at this stage. We don't have anything we've received to date that we would recommend a change.
Okay, so just looking at this map, it would be helpful if some streets, the proposed map that they brought before us tonight, and I know everybody in the audience don't have one, but it would be better if there were street names added to this map.
And I think you heard a comment that they've got more data coming when we first started talking about this. So I'm sure they'll share that with us, and we'll evaluate and get it to you. But yeah, the map proposed and what's advertised, legally advertised right now, is the map I proposed to you on November 9th and 10th. It'll be up to you if you're going to make changes.
Anyone else? You know, it's, there's been a lot of talk about how the minority population has grown in our community over the last 10 years. And what's interesting is that you look at the wards that are proposed, and the minority population has really spread out over all those wards, except for maybe Ward 1, which is almost 50% African-American. You know, that's not the Auburn I grew up in. And, but I think it's great that that's Auburn I live in today. And I think it's great that there are people from multiple nationalities with multiple skin colors that live down the street from each other and live in the same neighborhoods. And I think that's what we all want from our Auburn, is for our Auburn to look that way. So I'm very pleased to see that our residents are spreading out, and they're moving into all kinds of neighborhoods, and they feel welcome all over Auburn. And I personally think that's a very positive step for our community's future. I sure do. So this will come back up on the 21st. In the meantime, I would encourage those who would like to engage with the council to do that intentionally here over the next two weeks. The council will have to make a decision on the 21st, whether they want to postpone voting on this. If we deny unanimous consent, it would move to the first meeting in January, which I believe is the 4th. And then the council would consider that then. If unanimous consent is denied, traditionally, we have not had a public hearing that night, so there would not be a lot of discussion that evening. You have the right at the end of the meeting to talk to us about anything on your mind. So I don't want to deny you that opportunity if you'd like to do that. But if there's some good, healthy discussions that need to take place in the next two weeks, then certainly, we're all available to have those discussions with you. Okay? Okay. Anything else from the council?
Well, let me just say this, and I just want to close with a remark. And I hear you, Mayor Anders, as to saying, you know, what our neighborhoods look like. And, you know, we welcome everybody in each one of the neighborhoods. But I think that the main concern, and I don't want to speak for the people that came forward tonight, but I think their main concern is more or less not the neighborhoods reflecting the minorities that have moved into the community, but also this council. So I just want to make sure that that's understood also. That, you know, everybody more or less looking at, because of that change, and I heard Bob, what he said, what he just said about him being a minority on the council. Well, I wish you had have spoke up earlier, because the thing about it is, that's not the way I don't think people actually looked at it, as we do have two minorities on this council. So, you know, we don't want to get it twisted, but it's, you know, it's just out of fairness. And I'm all about fairness and doing the right thing sitting on this council, and I just want that to go on the record. It's all about being fair, and fair to the people and to our city.
Anyone else? Does anyone move to adjourn?
Don't move.
Where is your?